All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meeting of Board of Selectmen. I will call the meeting to order. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we go to open forum, let's run down tonight's agenda. Mr. Clerk, if you don't mind.
For open forum, we have two public hearings, Mr. Chairman, and ten or twelve action items. We will be going to executive session.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone here for open forum? Come on up. Just your name and address and...
I'm on the agenda, but I think I can do this right here. Do you have a paperwork?
Oh, yeah, right at the chair, I mean. Yep.
Anne Dunning, one fifty-five Elyableton Way.
Mm-hmm.
My husband Brian and I are here. We had put in front of you a proposed bylaw or going to a solicitation. We're getting... When we first moved here seven years ago, the first week we lived here, I had a solar company knocking on my door at nine o'clock at night. It's kind of a constant thing. They knock a lot, they're there a lot. There doesn't seem to be any respect for reasonable hours. And I had contacted Charlie Seelig, and he was good enough to take a few minutes to tell me, "We don't have a bylaw." I'm sure the police department is tired of phone calls, and I thought perhaps if we had a reasonable bylaw that kind of set some ground rules, it might be better for them, too. One of the big things is, nine o'clock at night, I don't think is a reasonable time for people to be knocking on your door. It's a little disconcerting. We have a young child in the house. It makes me nervous if I'm home alone and someone's knocking on the door at nine o'clock. This bylaw probably won't speak to the next situation, but last... Two weeks ago, we had a gentleman who was parked on Rock Meadow, which kind of overlooks Elyableton, where we live. My daughter got my grandson off the bus at two-thirty, and he... She noticed this man sitting here, not... You know, no markings on the truck, just sitting there. She went out for a run at three o'clock. He was still sitting there. I went out to do an errand at five-thirty. He was still sitting there. Six o'clock, he was still sitting there. My husband finally went over. He worked for us all company.
Oh, okay.
And obviously, he wasn't doing his job because he wasn't knocking on doors.
Right.
But, you know, that's just a little nerve-wracking, and I know we don't own the street, and that's a separate issue. But I'm hoping we can just put some reasonable guidelines in place to sort of help everybody.
Yeah.
So I just respectfully ask that you consider it.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I don't... I certainly have had the same knocks that probably everybody in the room has at some point, whether it be at your local... At the local business or residential.
Sure.
So I think some sort of bylaw in place is a good idea. I'll let the other two members of the board speak as well.
Why don't we do that? We take the action item?
Yeah, we could do that, yeah. Any other comment or concerns?
We definitely need something.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Yep. So we'll get to the items for our action items. We'll, you know, we'll discuss it and then vote on it.
Okay.
But, you know, I think we're all in agreement.
Thank you for your consideration and to Mr. Seelig for his time as well.
Thanks for bringing it up.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll close the public forum. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, notice is hereby given that the selectmen for the town of East Bridgewater will hold a public hearing to determine if it is the public... If it is in the public interest, will accept the following road as the public way. Johnson Farm Lane, as shown on plan entitled Johnson Farm Lane Definitive Subdivision. Layout plan site Johnson Farmer Estates, Johnson Farm Lane, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, prepared for the town of East Bridgewater, one hundred Willow Ave., East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, appeared by Silver Engineer and PC, Associate PC, dated November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two, and as shown on the plan entitled Johnson Farm Lane Definitive Subdivision, roadway as built. Site Johnson Farmer Estates, Johnson Farm Lane, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, prepared for the town of East Bridgewater, one hundred Willow Ave., East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, appeared by Silver Engineer and Associate PC, dated November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-two. Copies of the set plans are on file at the Board of Selectmen's Office, Town Hall, one seventy-five Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., zero-two-three-three-three. Do I hereby notify the public hearing regarding said road will be held at Town Hall, Main Conference Room, East Bridgewater, Mass., zero-two-three-three-three, Tuesday, on Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Board of Selectmen, Peter Piscagone, David Pecaro, Julius, and Dave Sheedy.
Thank you. Discussion? Charlie, want to open up the discussion on this?
As for, you know, with the... This is not one of the roads that are...
No.
...doing through special legislation. Now, this is the normal process.
Yep.
That when a subdivision is complete and the necessary work that is, you know, been done on the road, so everything is in place, including the layers of asphalt and such. The next step is for the developer to come back to the town because the developer has gone through the subdivision process, had the layout approved, you know. By the planning board, it's been inspected, for instance, by the DBW, that we move forward for acceptance of the road.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
But that in East Bridgewater, that necessitates a public hearing with the board so that if there's another opportunity for residents, any other parties, if they still feel their deficiencies or anything with the road, this is an opportunity for them to speak up.
Okay. All right, thanks for the update. Is there anyone here for the public hearing? Would you like to say something? Is there someone who wants to talk, or you just wanted to hear what was going on?
I have a question.
Absolutely. Come on up. Just give us your name and...
Amanda Madden, six Johnson Farm Lane. We've been paying for the streetlights for years.
Mm-hmm.
And I recently shut them off about six months ago because it was just getting unruly. Will those be turned on?
I would assume so, right?
The streetlights were put in, in the locations they were put in as part of the subdivision plan. We would have not said to the developer, "You need to put them in," unless we had the intention of taking them over and turning them back on, in essence, or paying for the bill at the very least. So, yes.
Excellent. Yeah. Go ahead.
Do you run that offense? How long does that take to have them turned on? I mean, it's very pitch black.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
So we... The town does it all on the street yet. This is the first step in the last few steps for the town to do so. This will go eventually to town meeting to be approved. It will accept the street. Once that's done, a month, give or take? I mean, the lights are already there. It's not that they have to be reinstalled or anything like that, so it should be relatively easy to do.
So it still has to go to town meeting, which is in...
In May.
May. Okay.
Charlie, if we find it, you know, if we talk to Paul, Police Chief, and they find it necessary to have those lights on, is there some sort of...
They're not our lights yet.
Okay. There's no special legislation?
Has to wait till it's rented.
All right. Just wanted to double check.
All right, so we're getting there.
We've run it out with other roads where the streetlights have been turned off and the roads have not been accepted by the town. We do not... We're not responsible for those lights. We're responsible for the lights on the town roads.
Yep. All right, well, ride.
Okay. Getting there.
We'll wait for town meeting, which I believe is in May.
Maybe.
And hopefully, maybe they'll get the LED lights in.
Yeah, right.
At that time.
All right. Need a motion to move this forward?
Is anybody else?
Anyway, yeah, is it... I'm sorry. Was there anyone else for comment or concern or nope? Just thumbs up over there? That was it?
[laughing]
Noted.
Motion to close the public hearing, Mr. Chairman.
Motion's made, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll move on to action items. Chairman, motion.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Have a good night.
Make a motion to vote that it's in the public interest to accept Johnson Farm Lane as a public way.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Any further discussion? Questions, concerns? Nothing? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to vote to accept the layout for Johnson Farm Lane as a public way.
Second.
You just have to read the town layout hearing notice.
He did.
Oh, I thought he read the...
No, he read it all.
He read both?
Oh, yeah.
Well, which one are you talking about?
There's two. So there's...
You went right through them.
One on page one and then page two.
Yeah, he did.
Really?
Yeah, he did, yeah.
Did you do them both?
No, I didn't.
Oh, you didn't? I thought I...
Like, where the heck was I?
Oh.
Okay.
I didn't think so. Yeah. So that's just like part two.
So that's a separate hearing?
Yeah.
It's the same, huh?
It's the same notice.
Right.
It's the same.
But this is for the layout. This is to accept the road.
Okay.
Do you have that to say?
No, I answered. Yeah.
Yeah. You have to do both.
Right at the beginning, okay.
Yeah.
All right.
As printed?
Right. As I said earlier.
Mr. Chairman?
Well, no, I'd like the as printed.
As printed?
As printed.
As printed, yeah.
No?
Layout hearing as printed, and if we get a question later on, we'll read it again.
Sure.
Like a town meeting?
Yeah.
Okay. As printed, motion's been made, is it second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yeah, we got a couple minutes till we do the next one.
Now, you can vote on action item two, though.
Isn't that what we just did? [laughing] I don't know. Who's on first?
Well, I stopped you before you voted.
Yeah. She's right about that.
Make a motion to adjourn and come back.
Want we know what we're doing?
That's the chairman.
We may never meet again.
I'm having a problem because I'm on the floor.
Motion to vote for layout Johnson Farm Lane as a public way.
Second.
Motion's been made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye.
All right, let's...
Hold on one minute.
We got, yeah, we got a few minutes. Let's just hit a couple of these layups over here.
Again. Chairman, I make a motion to vote intent of the layout of Elmwood Overlook Strathmore Road Extension as a public way in referring to the planning board to hold a hearing.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Discussion? Just pretty much what it says. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to vote to approve the minutes of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen meeting.
Second.
Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve and at least the minutes of the January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Selectmen's Executive Session Meeting.
Second.
Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to discuss the Assistant Town Account and change of hours.
Second.
Motion's made, second. Discussion?
So Melanie had asked that she feels that even with the reduction in the hours, that they will be able to perform the necessary functions of the office to bring the normal work week for the Assistant Town Account from thirty-five to twenty. This may be a temporary basis. They're going to have to see if, in fact, whether it works out or not. I would leave the budget alone because if it's on a temporary basis or we have a change of personnel there sometime in the future, I don't want to argue, put the fifteen hours back in the budget. We would leave the budget number at thirty-five hours. We just end up paying at twenty hours.
So what's it, Louis? Just five hours less than what it was previous?
No.
Fifteen?
Yeah, going from thirty-five to twenty.
Wow. All right. She's the boss.
If Melanie feels like the department can work with that, then she knows better than I do what she needs for support.
If it doesn't work, we'll have to readdress.
Right.
All right. Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I felt to approve the request of Fire Chief to increase the hours for the Administrative Assistant. Fire Chief is here, willing to jump up and tell us any more.
Motion's made, second.
Second.
Have a question? I'll give a brief chat.
Are you taking the fifteen from the Assistant Town Account?
Yeah.
Is that what we're doing?
No, so we're obviously getting busier. We're getting busier with EMS calls, which is a lot of what my administrative assistant has to do for EMS billing. But, you know, dovetail onto that is, next year, we start this project with the Medicare and Medicaid where we have to collect info for the entire fiscal year, which is going to start July first, two thousand and twenty-three, and run through June third, two thousand and twenty-four, and then the five months after that is compiling all this information and setting it up. If we don't do this reporting, there'll be a ten percent reduction in what we collect from Medicare and Medicare for EMS billing. So I anticipate there's going to be an increased workload, coupled with the fact that, you know, we're getting busier just with EMS in and of itself. And the department's obviously growing with the addition of four extra members. I feel it's necessary to increase our hours from thirty-seven and a half to forty.
All right, sounds good. Any questions? Any further discussion?
Thank you.
You already talked some, wow.
Yeah.
Of course you did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Chief.
I'd like to try and get through the next three action items.
Yeah?
Before we go to public hearing since we have a group here for...
Okay.
Chairman, I make a motion to check on the material and leave requests from the Assessing Office for approval.
Second.
Motion's made, second.
Right, so the employee has not been here long enough to be eligible for the Federal Family and Medical Leave Act leave. She is eligible for the Parental Leave Act in Massachusetts, which is the unpaid version. We don't have a paid version here. Most municipalities never accepted the statute to do that. But one of my recommendations is, is to allow her to be out for additional four weeks, unpaid, in addition to the eight weeks allowed by Parental Leave Act. It's a request that can be made via the union contract. The town will continue paying its share of the insurance, but the period, and then the additional four-week period.
Okay.
Remember, all this meets with the approval of the Director of Assessing.
All right. Does that put the office at any type of downtime situation where they...
They're going to... I talked to Paul, and she'll be able to work with the staff there to arrange for the hours so that we have coverage.
And she's in the back over there. We're all good?
Yeah, I mean, it's twelve weeks. It is what it is.
Right.
We've been the same last year when we lost one of the people in the office. We just all kind of hitchhiked back up.
All right.
Get it done, so...
Okay, sounds good. Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Chairman, I make a motion to review and sign the contract for FM generators for a generator.
Second.
So this is the generator that was previously approved for the Town Hall Police Station at the town meeting last year. This is simply the purchase of the generator. It's not the installation.
Right.
Installation will be happening late this fall. They bring it over on the truck eventually, and they don't even take it off the truck. It'll be our people and our equipment that get it off the truck.
Right.
But it's just the sheer purchase price. This is covered under a state contract, so we didn't have to go out to bid, though Brian did get quotes from a number of firms, and this was the low bidder on that. Not low quota, let's put it that way. We didn't go out for a formal bid.
Okay. I'm assuming it fell under all the guidelines of what happened at the meeting as well? Everything's good there? That's good. All right, motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the transfer of a Class II Johnson Farmer Robert and D'Agostino doing businesses as East Bridgewater Motormat, seven hundred North Bedford Street to GTI Auto Group Inc., seven hundred North Bedford Street. Restrictions limited to twenty cars for sale. All storage per property planned on file. Hours Monday through Friday, nine to nine. Saturdays, Sundays, nine to six.
Second.
Motion's made, second. And you guys want to come on up and can introduce your friends, Bob, and we can...
I don't have any friends left.
I know. I'm just trying to make you feel a little bit better on TV. It's a lot of audience, you know?
It's ratings week. My name's Bob Diagas, and I own Bobby D Motors and East Bridgewater. And I own East Bridgewater Auto Mart, which is next door, and it's got the twenty-tail license as it says. And I met Tiago and...
Larissa.
Larissa. And I took to take over the license and own the property, which, once I got to know and research there, what they do for business, and they have a lot in Whitman.
Yep.
And it's neat. I've talked to some of the buyers. They advise cows from some of the sellers, and they're all... They're all good.
Okay.
They're good people. And we're just doing the exact same thing that I'm doing that they never do.
Yep.
Yeah, nothing's changing.
I've met the two potential owners there, and I visited the GTI Auto Group with unique auto sales up in Whitman. It's... It looks like what a auto dealership should look like. It's everything where it should be, everything very neat, and they're great people to talk to.
That's convenient. It's only a quarter mile off the street for them.
Great. Well, if it goes wrong, we're just coming up to you.
Yeah.
I know where you live.
Definitely.
Everything's good. Yeah, well, we wish you all the success.
Thank you.
And you got big shoes to fill, obviously. Bobby's an icon here in town, so good luck.
That's just nice. He's old. Well, someday, they might be able to walk into my big, the big place.
Absolutely.
They're good at it.
Yeah.
They're good at it.
Perfect.
If they weren't, they wouldn't be there.
Yep. All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Talk to you soon. We'll all see you in a week or so.
Yep.
So you guys, you all there the other day after this?
No, no, it's...
All right, back to the public, the next public hearing.
Chairman, I make a motion that we continue the public hearing. Notice is hereby given that the Board of Selectmen will conduct a public hearing regarding the application of a Class II license for no more than two cars for sale beyond the site at any time. Additionally, the license should require that applicant owner shall remain in full compliance with special permitted January ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, filed by Judge P. Hassiotis, Sixth Lee Franklin Street, East Bridgewater, Mass., zero-two-three-three-three. Public hearing will be held at Town Hall, First World Conference Room, one seventy-five Central Street, East Bridgewater, Mass. on Monday, February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, at six forty-five PM.
And the reason this had been continued, and we had the question on the unpaid taxes, and Rebecca confirmed the taxes have been paid, so I don't believe there's any other anything hindering the board from approving a board solusion.
Well, we're sorry about that delay from the last meeting. Yep. So I'm assuming you're Mr. Hassiotis?
No, I'm Emile S. Team. I'm his representative.
Okay.
And I work for Mr. Hassiotis.
All right.
We have confirmed with the assessors, as well as the tax collectors, that paid all the bills, other various parcels we own as well.
Great.
Satisfied everybody.
Okay. Not being said, I think we went through the situation last time we here, read the file.
Correct. It's a simple two-car, you know, company. We run the gravel pedal back. We purchase and sell trucks.
Mm-hmm.
It's just convenient for us as we are located right at the gas station, as well as the infrastructure around.
Great. All right, well, it sounds good. Anyone have any questions or concerns? Charlie, you're all good?
Yes, I think it looks good.
Paper works all in order.
Perfect. Okay, well, motion's made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're all set.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
Have a good night.
I guess our ratings week went down a little.
Yeah, right.
Jeez. Oh, my gosh.
I didn't know it was exactly...
Down, man. Something we said?
Mr. Chairman, I...
It is clear of room.
Right.
Make a motion to set or reset the annual fee for beer and wine pouring license.
Well, did you want to go back up to...
You got to go to the door-to-door.
Bylaw.
Number nine.
Oh.
Number nine.
Oh.
Number nine.
If I haven't yet checked that. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to re-discuss Tom Bylaw on door-to-door solicitation.
Second.
Chief, do you have any comments? You've got a copy of that Yarmouth one?
I don't have any comments, I just, when we talked to you about the email and stuff like that, I figured nine AM was a decent time for contractors to start. And with daylight savings and all that, I figured somewhere around dusk would be an appropriate time to call.
Is there a technical, I'm not trying to be funny, is there a technical time dusk, like a half hour before sunset?
I'm not sure. I just, you know, once it starts getting dark and, and then at least it gives us a little bit of teeth to shut them down so that I'm bothering people.
What do you got?
It's a half hour after sunset.
Yeah. Half hour before sunrise, half hour after.
So whatever the time is for sunset, it's a half hour.
Alright.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's smart, right? I mean?
Yeah, I mean, nine o'clock at night, that's just, that's a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So what's the process?
Well.
This doesn't affect, I'm sorry, is it like Halloween, like?
No, they're not, they're not selling anything.
Okay.
They're just begging.
Just, I don't know, I'm making sure, you know, you know, this, you know.
They don't.
Forget somebody that way.
Call you if you sign up.
Call the police.
They're selling protection, is that what you're saying?
I don't know, I'm just looking at every angle.
It's of a solar panel.
Every angle, kid's got a solar panel and candy bag.
Could be a solar panel salesman.
They all check in with us and we, and we check them off, but still, that's, that's just too late.
Right, yeah, I agree.
So, one possibility is just limit it to that one provision, which is time of operation. I also distributed a copy that she had found from Yarmouth, which is far, I won't say far more involved, but far more detailed. And so, for instance, there's a no-knock list. We remember the old not, no-call or?
Oh, yes.
No-call list, it doesn't work anymore, obviously. But in this case, residents could register with the police department to say, you know, Mary or Joe does not want any solicitation at all, and they would register with the police department, the police department would give, you know, Acme Solar, the list, say, do not knock on these doors, do not go to these addresses, you'll be in violation of your permit.
It's real simple for us to do.
Yeah, I mean, most of the people that are in that area have that no-solicitation sign, you know, on their doorway or somewhere, since it's beating.
The only thing I would say is that the Yarmouth bylaw doesn't appear to mention any exceptions for political or religious organizations, which I believe are exempt. You don't even know if they have to register with you.
Right.
But I think, I mean, after check with council, I think we probably can still have reasonable regulations in terms of time of operation, in a sense of, we're not discriminating against any political organization, religious organization, we're saying to everybody, you know, half hour, I mean, the dusk time is it, we don't care what you're doing, but you're not coming by to say vote for Jim or vote for Joe at ten o'clock.
Or Peter even.
Yeah, right.
Peter.
Don't vote for Peter. So I'm assuming we just, we're just pushing this towards?
To town meeting.
Which will have some different wording, 'cause I know on the Yarmouth application, they ask for social security numbers and stuff like that, which obviously we have no right to ask.
We ask for their IDs.
From the people that are doing the soliciting.
Yep. Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I mean, it's pretty, pretty standard.
Yeah, run it by council, any other revisions?
Just get the wording correct.
Okay.
Alright.
It's like a smart thing to do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to set or reset the annual fee for beer and wine pouring license.
Second.
So, we have not had, I guess in recent history in East Bridgewater, a restaurant that only did beer and wine. We have package stores that are beer and wine, we have package stores that are all alcohol. We have restaurants that are all alcohol. We've never had, or at least again recently, anybody just having an eatery with just beer and wine, but we, but the, is it ponytail?
Ponytail party.
Oh, yeah, right.
Is, so they, we need to set a license fee for them. And what we did was set it up proportionally in the sense of, it's nine hundred dollars for the all-alcohol, we'll drop it to six hundred for the beer and wine.
Annually?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, that's standard, I guess.
Well, I don't know if it's standard, we didn't go out and survey, but in a sense of it should be less than the all-alcohol.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. I didn't know they were that high.
A little high.
That's what I was thinking too.
Thinking like half?
Did you wanna cut it down? I mean, we've, we've only, it would apply to everybody, if you brought it down to five hundred or four fifty or whatever, it would apply to anybody else who came in, which is fine.
Well, we do have beer and wine common victular.
Tatami was, used to be.
No, we have.
Now they have a full license.
I don't know, I thought you had said a pouring license is different.
In a package?
Right, but we do have common victular.
For just beer and wine?
Yeah.
Do we have any establishments that have just a beer and wine pouring license?
No. But we have the annual fee for it, yeah.
Well, we always have the annual fee for it.
Yeah.
Okay, what's the?
Five hundred.
Okay.
There you go.
It gets so, okay.
Five hundred.
So this is a pouring license, so that's different than a, for selling, this is for, what we talked about when?
Where they're going to ponytail, they're drinking their, so it's a pouring license as opposed to a package license.
Okay.
Right.
And they're getting this because?
All the stuff you put in your pocketbook.
No.
And they're getting this because, if you remember, they don't, they, there's a limit on the number of one days they can do and such, so it's just, it's just a bit better for them to get the license for the full year.
Okay.
Yeah, five hundred seems reasonable, right, yeah. Okay, motion's made second, discussion all set, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to discuss and possibly vote on changing the name from Selectmen to Select Board.
Second.
Second.
So, I did find something through the Massachusetts Association that they have a map showing which communities have select boards and which have boards of selectmen. Still, it's about sixty percent now that are select boards, those that, you know, either select boards or boards of selectmen. I talked to Chris Kenny, he said a simple bylaw change we can do here, which would be, you know, basically, any instance where it says board of selectmen or something on that order would say Select Board. He did say that, sort of, valid and suspenders, that we should get a home rule petition sent up, that in essence says, it would read, you know, for the town of East Bridgewater, any place that says in the Massachusetts general laws or regulations where selectmen would be, the equivalent here is Select Board. So we would do two things, one, change our own bylaws, but two, make sure that in terms of Massachusetts general laws, those references relate to the Select Board here in East Bridgewater if the board and the town eventually adopt the bylaw.
Yep.
Okay.
Listen, I've used that expectation, the Select Board for years now.
It's, it's the wave of the future.
Yeah, makes sense. Okay, motion's made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to set up a Town Hall mailbox request from the Garden Club.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion?
No.
Let there be mail.
Right.
The only thing is, I would like, I'd like to make sure we get a letter releasing the town of any liability so that they get a package and somebody else blocks off of it, they don't come looking for us saying, why didn't you guard our package?
Right, our plant.
Sitting there, yeah. Our seeds.
Seeds.
They don't know what they're growing.
No, don't wanna know.
I do.
Don't wanna know.
If I am approving it.
Right. Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve a request for a proclamation and day for Paula Coffey.
Second.
Motion's made second?
I hope she's not watching.
All in favor?
Close the surprise.
We have, I think, since we had one other occasion where we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't.
And he's foster.
I mean, I don't see a problem with it.
We'll give you yours, Peter, after you take.
Thank you, yes, it's, yes, I mean, it's, you know, I mean, obviously, Mrs. Coffey, as I know her, she's been around town a long time, been a lot, very successful, so certainly if you're looking for a day, as far as I'm concerned, for, for to celebrate longevity of her business and her involvement in town, you know, I think it's, I think it's fine. I support it. If I don't, your son, Jimmy, probably won't talk to me ever again, so.
I was, yeah, I mean.
I'm just kidding, he's still talking. I mean, you know, I don't know how many we'd get, if this opens up the floodgates for, you know, anyone and everyone, but.
So I saw, I think we had this discussion a few months back, I said, you know, you could have a qualifying number, you know, you've gotta, been doing this for twenty-five years, thirty years, whatever.
Yes.
Fifty.
Fifty, even.
Fifty?
Oh, I'm sure, easy, yeah. Yeah. Set some qualifying situat, yeah, guidelines for, for.
Two hundred, bicentennial only.
Yeah. Yeah. I think whatever the guidelines are, she would, she would.
Yes, she would.
She would definitely fall into qualify for that, so.
And I can, Rebecca Raisoff can contact her, and I know she said, well, it could be any day, but there's probably a day that she would like in mind and we'll find that out.
The anniversary of her opening day.
Business or something.
Yeah.
Yep, sounds good.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an event permit application submitted by the Viking Sports Alliance for an annual road race that will take place Sunday, April 2nd, 2023, from eight fifteen to ten forty-five AM with a setup at seven AM.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Don't they usually do that on a Saturday?
Yeah, they change, there was some, there was a reason, I think it was the election, it was the same day, it used to be the same time.
But now we moved the election.
Yeah.
They probably didn't wanna do it on April Fool's Day.
Yeah.
Well, they could have fun with a race on April Fool's Day though, right?
Yeah, you and I could run. Chairman, do we vote on that?
Yes, we did, and we passed it.
Mr. Chairman.
Manishly.
Make a motion to approve an event permit application submitted by Amber Sadler, Regna Events LLC for Regna Relay New England, Saturday, May 20, 2023, from two thirty AM to ten AM.
Second.
Motion's made second, what is this?
Okay, so, it's a, it's a very long haul relay race, and they have teams of foots.
Oh, yeah?
I remember having this come up in Halifax, let's say ten, ten runners, so each one runs a segment and then they?
Oh, oh, oh.
They have a bus that everybody else is on and they follow the runners and they just keep going through the night and through the day.
So is this an extension from East Bridgewater to other towns?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, we have.
I think this one's actually starting in Connecticut.
Oh, really?
They run the whole way.
Yeah, yeah, I remember this, yeah.
They've done it three years in a row.
Charlie, you gonna run from Connecticut to East Bridgewater?
Alright.
I'm not even running.
How about just from Rhode Island to East Bridgewater?
Well, I used to go maybe, run, no.
Yep. Alright, yes. Motion made second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve an event permit application submitted by Veterans Agent Chris Beckler for an EB Veteran Expo that will take place on the Town Carman, Saturday, May 20, 2023, from ten AM to two PM, setup time at nine AM.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion?
Go, Chris.
Go, Chris. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve the request from Professional Bar Tend and Services LLC for one-day liquor license for the Center at Sage and Rock for a sixtieth birthday party, February eighteen, 2023, from six PM to nine PM.
Second.
Motion made second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the request from the Board of Health to use Sage and Rock Farm, June 5th, 2023, from four PM to eight PM for a rabies clinic. Time of the event will be five PM to seven PM, rain day, June 6th, 2023, cats from five PM to six PM and dogs six PM to seven.
Second.
Alright, motion made second, any discussion? It's good to see that the board's still conducting this for many years, good event. Yep, all in favor?
Aye.
Just making sure you were kinda looking at it. I know you're a little further down, so you can't. See it as well. Alright, thank you, thank you, thank you. Charlie, wanna start or Rebecca? One of you guys?
I'll start.
Alright.
I have a message from the town clerk. She would like to remind everybody about the annual town election, which will be Saturday, May thirteenth, from eleven AM to seven PM. Nomination papers are now available for the following. One moderator, three-year term. One selectman, three-year term. One assessor, three-year term. One board of health, three-year term. Two library trustees, three-year terms. Three planning board members, three-year term. Two school committee, three-year term. The last day to pull papers is Wednesday, March twenty-second, and they must be returned by Friday, March twenty-fourth. Please contact the clerk's office with any questions, five zero eight three seven eight one six zero six. Also, please return your census form if you have not already done so. The next thing is the town report cover contest. We haven't received any submittals yet.
Oh, boy.
We saw what the big announcement we made a few weeks ago.
The artist.
Gotta make a call.
Yep, so for anybody, department heads, residents, students, anybody, we're accepting photo entries for the 2022 annual town report through March twenty-fourth. Any questions, you can call our office. That's it for me.
Thank you.
And I only had one item that didn't make on the agenda, we had, resident Nicole Whalen would contact the Selectment Office last month about the possibility of the town building a recreation center, or, in particular, for the youth of the town that may not already be active in the various sports programs or music or anything else, to give them a place to be rather than just hanging around. She mentioned the possibility of using the precise engineering or eastern steel sites, which obviously would, and number other hurdles, but what I really, I don't wanna discourage her, but what I wanted to do was recommend that she talk with the Recreation Commission. I know, you know, off and on, the town's been talking about this, but maybe with additional person who is interested, maybe they can coalesce something and move that along.
Yep.
And that's the outside executive session, that's all I know.
Aye.
Thank you. Board discussions, Carol?
Have we met since the Council on Aging Open House?
We have not.
We have not, that was a great event.
Yep, it was good.
Thank you to Nancy Hill and her staff for putting that together, thank you to Peter for making us all laugh. And David as MC, you did a terrific job, as always.
It was fun, it was a fun time, the cookies were great.
Cookies are awesome.
Yeah.
He does a great job.
Right.
She's just about to get incorporated, so.
Wow, yeah, she's banging them out. Alright, thank you.
Yep.
Dave, you having?
Nope. She stole my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry, well, you don't get to own all the bicentennial events.
That's it.
I praised you.
Lost.
Good, a quick update on Route Eighteen, the project there continues to move forward. We've got an application that we're working on with the OCPC once again, or maybe some federal funding as well. So, you know, we've kind of moving that, that along and continuing to have discussions to finalize a couple of the agreements. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, you know, myself or Charlie or both of us will have some information to pass forward to the board as far as that goes. So it's still moving forward at the usual pace. But we'll get there, I think.
We'll get there.
Yep. That's it, that's all I got.
A great team.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to vote to adjourn to open session and go into executive